Okay. Okay, we'll call the April thirteen two thousand twenty-three's on the board of appeals meeting. At. Seven thirty. Okay. Role call, we have Bill Bland, Steve Short, Rick Maloney, myself, Mark Lucinda. Applications for receipt, don't see any, okay. Continuation of the public hearing, ZVA. Twenty-three dash one application for variance from section four to one, two, two, and seven point zero two point zero one. To allow for two premise use, primary uses on a single parcel at twenty-five Old Barnes Road. Owner willing to help fire department African Tom Schneider, the owner, our agent. Now, Rick, did you review the last?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mike sent it over and reviewed it. We're, we're all up to speed, do we have any questions?
Um, I don't think so, I think we'll open up the public hearing again, is that what you intend to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. At this point. We've reviewed everything. And does anybody else have any more questions that they would add like that, Tom, or any questions about the site?
I think once the public hearing is open, I have a couple of questions. You don't mind?
Yeah, no, that's it, I, I thought, I thought we were, I thought it was open.
It was open?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
So. So, go ahead, if you have one.
Right, so, um, application, uh, twenty-three one, so we get, um. Variance, so this is the public hearing that's currently open is for the Wellington Fire Department, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. Tom is here, right? Um, so when I looked at the tape. There were no residents opposed to the application.
Correct.
Um. And there were two residents that actually were here in support of the application. Um, I know, Tom, you had talked a bit about hardship. Um, and I know that you put a correspondence in the file to, for the hardship. And did we, do we basically enter that into the record? Mike, is that part of the application?
Yeah, it'll be uploaded as part of the application.
Okay.
Portland.
So when I looked at the hardship, Tom, I think it was drainage was an issue, could you just talk us through a little bit about why that's such a problem on that site for you?
Yeah, I think it's because of trying to, the only other alternative is to split the property. And to split the property, there's drainage that goes. If you're looking at the property, the parking lot comes down close to the resident, the house.
In town.
If you want to help and show us on this map, there's, there's a creek.
Yeah, there's storm drains.
Uh, there's drainage, there's, 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 there's drainage right here. Catch basin type drains that goes out to the whole parking lot. So again, with this running down into where the, uh, it needs to go out to the, to the road where the catch basin below. We can't conform to, it's pre-existing, they made it that way. When they built the parking lot, when they built this, and this, well, this was secondary. But it's pre-existing with the parking lot, and there's really nothing that we can. Change in terms of splitting the property unless we. Doug up, it's pre-existing, so we, we would have to dig up all the drainage and do, do all that stuff to, to make it happen.
How big is the parcel?
Four point two, I believe.
Okay. Are they on a separate, what, well, in separate?
Yes.
Yeah. So you have a special permit currently for the church, right?
Yeah.
That allows you to?
It's special permits for the property, so that we can use it, we can use it, we can have events there, we can do things. But, once we let somebody live there. That becomes a primary use of the property, and we can't do anything else.
Right, okay, so it kind of voids the special permit when you have a residence?
Yes, yes, it puts it on hold, basically, it says, you know, like, if we don't have anybody, we want to throw people out and. Um, not collect the rent money. Then we can use it, like you said, we try to use. You know, you don't know if I have it in front of me, I shouldn't have it in front of me, man, don't. Again, it really, it's how many events per year, like sixty employees. Um, but yeah, that's how it's set now, and what we'd like to do is continue to generate some revenue. Let the house, kind of use it as, as it was used before, when the church was there. Um, the pastor would live there as a resident. And holds an organization, organization, organizational events. Over in the, uh, church building. And there would be weddings, there would be, you know, gatherings, of course, services and stuff like that, so we're kind of just asking with instinctly.
So I think Eastern Highland Health District will limit you to sixty events per year annually?
Yeah, was that, Mike, was that Eastern Highland, but that regulation, or was it?
You're limited, yeah, to, um. Sixty. I don't know, it's a certain number of events per year in excess of, of a certain amount of people, so you could have. People there every weekend, but.
Yeah.
There's a total, total people that can be there.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was Eastern Highland, the fact that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me, let me pull that up. Would you be expecting that sixty events in a?
Not typically, no, no, I mean, currently we do. Uh, you know, there, there's things that we do at the, the current firehouse. Um, where we'll let it rent out, you know, it's not every weekend, it's probably, I'd say, an average every other weekend, maybe. So it's kind of typically what we're doing, it's probably last week, because we still have the facility across the street, but we just want to utilize the building.
So. The condition is that events with more than twenty-five attendees shall be limited to not more than sixty times per year. And that is a planning and zoning commission condition, which was part of their special permit, which I think just aligns with the health department.
Okay, aligned, so I thought it was.
Uh, you tick off that event box when you have, um, twenty-five people?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-five people or more, like you said, if we rented their Boy Scouts and they have some kind of fundraiser or something, that's twenty-five people or more, so. That would be one of them, but again, I don't anticipate. You know, significant use of it, I think we're going to use it for training, for classes, and stuff like that. For the fire department primarily, on Tuesday nights or what have you, and. Um, again, if there's a, you know, fishing game, for example, on Tuesday, they need a little more space, they're kind of cramped in the current call that they use. Where we are now, so maybe they would do something over there, but. So, like you said, I don't see a lot of them.
What about entertainment? Would there be exterior entertainment associated with any events, or?
I wouldn't say so, because. In the current firehouse, there's barbecue pit, it's out back, so outside, people gathering, they cook, they do whatever outside. There's nothing over here, everything's interior, I mean, I can't say, oh, we would go outside, but. There's nothing for people to do out there, like cook, or there's no outside barbecue pit or stage or anything like that, so. I can't see anybody being outside very often.
Okay. Mike, what would it do to the special permit? Like we, this was. Yeah, so I. Was looking at it, and, um. There is a condition that they only use the detached residential structure for storage and office space. And that really was. Because the, we were looking to limit what. Uses occurred on the property, to keep them part and parcel of what would be. Expected for use by a fire department. Use as a single-family home, it's in RE zones, we can't prohibit them from using a, the single-family home as a single-family home. Um, so I don't think they would need a modification of their special permit. And they, they've used it as such since twenty-twenty, because that was where the fire department and.
Yeah, it started with COVID and stuff, and people needed places to stay away from their family members, that, you know, we're getting sick and stuff, so. Uh, they ended up staying there, using it, we cleaned it up and set it up that way. Then it kind of went from there, like, you know, we really like to get some revenue, so we can offset any kind of ask in the town for our budgets. You know, in terms of the property, or even across the tree for old farms on, so, yeah, we've been kind of using it since about twenty-twenty.
Is it occupied now?
Yes.
Okay. So when we talk about primary uses, I mean, it would really be, you're asking for two primary uses, I'm assuming.
Yeah, right, Mike.
So it's really, uh, it's, it's an aberration, because then you're going to have one parcel, two. Primary uses.
Right, right, and again, it's, it's kind of the way it was used before, you know, there was a residence, there was a permanent residence, he was living in the, in the house. And holding functions at the church. It's kind of the same thing, yeah.
Yeah. We've talked about, I mean, I've talked about this with various people at the fire department, you know, for. Years and evaluating options, and I pushed them to go subdivision route, because that's what, in. That's what's allowed by the regulations, but it also. Puts them in a position where the parcels aren't tied together, but that. Number one, to access the house, you have to go through the parking lot, which is part of the property now, so they would either need. In theory, get themselves an easement, or they need to establish a second driveway, which would effectively have to be on the property line, because of how close the house is. They would also need the property line to run through the parking lot, because we require two hundred feet of frontage. And. There's no way to give them two hundred and then bring it back in, so that it doesn't go through the parking lot. So then they'd be ripping up portions of the parking lot to deal with the property line that they'd have to install. And so. There's no way to. Really subdivide the property. Without creating another non-conformity that they either would need to seek a variance for, or physically, like I said, remove parking. And they can't move parking, because then they can't use the church for the uses they've asked for, because we would require parking to be provided based on the size of the building. So I, there's not really a way for them to get themselves into a conforming position and upgrading another non-conformity, which they'd have to do something else. Which is probably more non-conforming than where they are right now. Yeah, yeah, and that, so this, you know, is an existing. It's an existing use, in the sense that they're not asking to use the property in a way that the regs don't allow, they're just asking to not have to put a property line between the two buildings. Um, which to me is less intrusive than. Some of the alternatives.
So then we could have Wellington Day here? Yes, absolutely. It's open to the public, we've added, we've had requests to use the building several times, but we have to turn them down, you know? From different organizations and down, because.
So currently, you can't really use that, though.
Right.
You're just, you know. Procluded right now, because the special permit just allows you for the residential.
Yeah, if, if nobody was living there, yes.
Okay.
I'm not very interested, do you guys have any, any other question?
Let's see, um. Number of people allowed in the hall? You know, I don't?
I don't know, it's not my head.
Yeah, I remember the size of it.
Yeah, I'm guessing a couple hundred people, you know, and probably less than tables and chairs.
Either fire department, you'd probably be aware of that.
Yeah, I don't know, like, it's not listed there, did I know the fire marshal in the?
It's something over there. And looked at it when they put together a formula.
Yeah, it's, it's based upon why they're there, what the room is set up as, how big the exit doors are.
Yeah.
Because you only get so many people, you know.
And again, the fire marshal and Jim Rupert were over there in the process of getting the, the special permit. And, um, went over all of it, and came up with all the figures and numbers, and this, I don't know, I mean. They did the inspections and all that stuff.
Okay, any other? Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay.
I would move to both the public hearing. And the second half of them.
My favorite? I, I, okay, uh, now we'll move on to. The hearings, uh, continuation of the hearing, ZVA twenty-one dash two. Application for variance from section. Five point zero, two point zero, one point zero, one point zero, one. To allow for a four-family dwelling at four twenty, Colin Turnpike. Owner. Four twenty-nine, or that's four twenty-nine, for owner four twenty-nine, Colin Turnpike Group applicant Sean Lafferty. Um. Any questions? That we, that we would have, probably?
Yeah.
Continuing with that.
John, go right ahead. Hey, Sean. Well, um. So I was just wondering what you define as your hardship here, if you would.
So essentially, like, my, the, the anxiety that I have of, like, potentially with the, the waves being used, the way that I've always known to be used. Um, could potentially be revoked at any given point in time. Um, it's also precluded us from being able to essentially make some changes to the property, the way that we would want to better serve the tenants and the, and the units. Um, because it's not officially listed as a four-family. Um, we'd like to do some upgrades for our electrical system and a couple of other things, and we can't do that, because we don't have it established, like, a four-family. Um, unit for the board, you know, or, um, or for, like, every person, or anything like that, like, I don't have records to be able to show that. Um, I can show, like I said, that it was used up until a point in time, um, as a four-family, but nothing, nothing in an official capacity.
So. So you presently have a non-conforming use, correct?
I correct.
Because it's a two-family in a R eighty zone.
In a single-family zone, that's correct, sir.
So maybe we should change the zone for that whole district. To allow for multi-family use.
I mean, I, if, if that's what would be a better suit to, to you gentlemen, you know, that's, that's up to you, I, I've talked to Mike, and I, I. I, and talking to Mike, it seemed like this was maybe the better route, or easier route, at least, because it's, it's a single property, to my knowledge. Um, and I don't, I don't think that there are any other people that are. Trying, or trying to do this type of thing, like, to change the entire zoning. Um, it just seems like, for whatever reason, this has been, this property's been a little bit of oversight for years, um, in terms of how it's been used. Because a lot of the board members here apparently, you know, can confirm that it was used, you know, as a three-family with an actual business attached to it. For years, um, and so now. And it was never cited as a three-family, any kind of town records that we could see, even, um, and so now I'm trying to confirm. I'm trying to get, like I said, legitimized as a four-family. Um, I even have a statement from, you know, beside these general, from somebody else who also confirms it was a three-family, like I said before, this one in regulations came into fruition.
Well, we just don't know when the four families started, but it appears to have been. Yeah. So several, several years back, decades back?
Yeah, so to my, so what I have for, for documentation, and I can state is that early two thousand, I have. Um, a nephew of the property owner that can confirm it was a four-family at this point, at that point in time. Um, again, in the last meeting, speaking to you gentlemen, you guys had a better idea of what the, like, the business that was there at that point in time. And the, the conclusion you tend to come to, which kind of would make sense, is that when the business closed down. That section of the property probably just got converted into a residence at that point. I believe, if memory serves me right, that happened maybe like late nineties, what we were kind of thinking, which kind of, you know, go coalesced with the same timeline that I can, that I can get on my records. Um, I, because I, the best I could do was, like I said, early two thousands. Um, it's difficult to find property owners that are still around and, and, you know, remember everything, unfortunately, when it's been twenty-plus years.
And our town records. Are. Not solid anymore.
No, no, it's just. We, I mean. It's. We know, as he mentioned from Peggy, that it was three-family in the seventies, because she lived there, and her dad had three-family, so. We know that, and we lo- looked through stuff, and there's, there's hints of that in some of the health department stuff, which is talking about bedrooms, because when you have a structure that's split up. You wouldn't. You wouldn't somehow increase the number of bedrooms on one of the units, once that, that business closed, right? So there's clear reference to four bedrooms. And. But it doesn't, there's nothing that clearly says four-family. Um. Even as a three-family, it should have been regularly inspected by fire marshal. Um, and, but because it was that way forever, and as he mentioned, it had been basically oversight, no one. I mean, I guess we knew formally on paper, but no one really knew. There was no one going into the building, so there's, we just don't have, we just don't have those records, but the structure has never been enlarged. So it's not as if there was some addition that went in fifteen years ago, that we permitted as a porch, and now we've got. Right, so the structure that was built is still the same structure. Um. And there have been fairly regular interactions with the health department for one reason or another. Other sort of thing that I think we looked at for this property that jumped out at me is, this has obviously been used as a multi-unit dwelling for a significant period of time, is there is regular water testing? You don't see that with a single family, we don't have water tests over and over and over again for. Houses. Um, but if you have rentals and you have tenants, you're more interested in what the water quality is.
Um, is that a requirement? In Wellington, or just a precaution for the owner?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's expressly required, or at what point we need to be doing that, um, it may be based upon an occupant, I'm not sure. But unless a resident says, I'm going to have my water tested, and then decides to provide a copy to us, we, alls we have is the initial test from the wells drilled. But, but this property has consistent water testing, which is what you see with larger multi-bounds. So. From what I can look at, I think it was like two owners ago, is probably when it happened, which I think is in the nineties. So. You know, thirty years is what we're looking at for four-family, and fifty years for three-family, either way, neither is allowed, even if. If he didn't seek the variance, or the variance was denied, he has a three-family, which is also not allowed. Right, so. You would have to take a, a three-family or four-family, which has been in place for fifty-plus years, and basically convert it to a single-family home, which it's never been. To, to, you know, that's his only alternative, which, which, um. I don't think, I don't even know if it was constructed as a single-family.
Yeah. A couple of points I want to address, uh, I don't have the written copy of your, um, information, and you've gone to some lengths, I must say. Saying that's to your credit, um, you know, to bring this into a. A more legitimate thing, and, you know, you have a right concern. A question that couldn't be called, did you say that you had the fire department come and inspect it just the same?
Yeah, so I, I did reach out to the fire marshal's office, and I did have Trevor and me did a cursory inspection of, of the units that I have, so the two that are currently, the two that are currently occupied. Are free at the time, and then the one that I'm looking to alter renovate, which is part of the reason for doing this. Um, he went through, he took some cursory notes, um, and I, and he said, like, if we would be in contact, I've tried reaching out to him a couple of times, and kind of really haven't connected again. But that is my goal, is to, like I said, is to determine essentially what the, what the allowed use will be, and then whatever it is to follow up with Trevor to, like, if, if I need to do another path of egress out of the face. I need to enlarge it, a larger window to make that other egress option, like, I'm willing to go to those lengths, um, and similarly. You know, in the renovation I'm doing, I've been talking to, like I said, Jim Rupert in his office, to kind of make sure that the things that we're doing, the renovations are. Here, or it's, like I said, a multi-family usage, so making sure that the, the doors are fire-rated, um, you know, there, there's a proper amount of, uh, heat rock, so like, is there a fire, you know, kind of roofing kind of thing, to make sure that doesn't impact on the units, should that ever occur? Um, and again, other things of that sort, but it's, unfortunately, to a degree, it's like a domino effect, of like, if I don't have this domino fall, like, I really don't want to put in more money and invest to do all those other things.
Well, I appreciate the, uh. That consideration, and as I understand it, um. Even the three-family, it will be, uh, inspected by fire each year, so that's great. Uh, my other point was, um, can you explain to me more, uh, or us more, um. What you, the contact that you'd have with the, uh, ever source, and your considerations there, what were there?
Yeah.
Um, requirements, or what have you, that's.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, it's not a problem, so one of the things that we're looking to do, is we're looking to upgrade our electrical infrastructure that's there. Um, right now, there's two panels, older, not a lot of circuits there, um, we're looking to expand that to make it so it's actually like five separate, you know, meters. One for each of the units, as well as like a lunar one, but in doing so, by upgrading our electrical overall, like the service line and stuff like that to the house. We're looking to also go as a more green option, where instead of using, um. Oil as our, in a typical kind of boiler system, we're looking to, um, to go into like, uh, mini splits, like, uh, air source, power heat pump, stuff like that. Um, it, it'll be a little bit, it'll obviously be, that's why I mean electrical, but also be a little more efficient. Um, as well as giving our tenants the option of AC during summertime, which is not something they currently have, unless they want to. Um, which we do allow, but if they want to lug up, like, uh, wall, uh, like, window units. Um, but again, we also have to limit them to an extent, because again, like I said, the panels are only, but there's only so many circuits, there's other panels, or like, so like, that's also part of that. Um, so again, like, that, that's why, like I said, this is a domino effect, because, you know, to do something like that, that kind of upgrade, um, is costly, and ever source won't. Ever source doesn't, I guess, won't do the work, from my understanding, from what I've talked to my DC, without confirming that was a four-family, or is it four-family, you can't just, like, split a property, and they give, at any given point in time, and just put it in more meters. Um, so like, that's, again, part of the reason why I'm, why I'm here.
They won't, ever source won't energize the service until the building department releases the service in the ever source system. When we can't, he can't do those code-up rates, because he doesn't have approval for the units.
So we have three services now, or just the two?
Two, 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 pan, two meters, yes.
I think that, um, comes a lot of, right?
Your problem.
Any, any other questions?
What would it, what, two meter, I mean, the, two meters, right, so at some point, it was. Metered for a two-point, I think, which is. Those. The zone is one.
Yeah, um, I, of course, I don't have any records to that end, um, I, it looks like the work is definitely on the older side, that I would not say that's been done the last twenty years, I would say. Before then, I mean, we're not, there's no knob and tube in the place, and there's no, there, you know, it is, there's no fuses, it is actually circuit breakers, at least, but it's still not. Very recent work, from what I can tell, at least, you know? But I, I don't, of course, I don't have a better answer, to nail down that timeline, there's no records to indicating the network is done. Yeah, nothing that I, nothing that I've been able to ascertain, unfortunately.
Okay, any other? Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. We, uh. Have a motion to close. DVA. Twenty-three dash two. I shall move in a second, get through, hopefully, all through. Bye.
Bye.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to new business. DVA. Dash twenty-one dash one, application for variance. Um. On the second. Four point. Two, one, point two, two, and seven, one, point, or seven, zero, seven, point, zero, one, point, or zero, two, point, zero, I'm messing that at all, point zero, one. To allow for two primary uses in a single. Parcel at twenty-five Old Barnes Road. Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move to approve. ZBA twenty-three one, as presented. Uh, for a variance to section four point twenty-one, point twenty-two, section seven point oh, two, oh, one. To allow two primary uses upon one parcel. Uh, the hardship presented is a change to a non-compliant parcel, the hardship is drainage on the parcel. Um. And the fact that the parcel isn't allowed, the parcel wasn't allowed. Uh, religious use in a residential zone, once the religious use was vacated, the parcel is non-conforming and cannot. Uh, clearly be rectified, uh, and there was no opposition to the application.
If we have a second, second. Okay, we had discussed. Um, anybody want to throw some discussion, throw it on there, through the discussion, I mean.
I mean, it's nothing you can do in parts, it's just, you know, you're, I mean, it's a non-conforming part, and, you know, religious parcels like this, I mean, they're, you know, they're, uh, when they've been sold. You know, they're, they're in residential, you know. Area zones, and really, very little you can do with that, also, you know, they've been great stewards for the town, uh, they do a great job. Um, you know, you thank, you know, the applicants for, you know, all the work that they've done, you know, but that doesn't have anything to do with the variance, but there's clearly a hardship here.
I think, uh, the historical reference of the residence being used and the hall being used. Right, yeah, you know, means it that way, the hardship presented, uh.
I mean, there's, could argue that two primary uses, you know, the rectory and the church, I mean, you've got a residential, you've got, you've got a service, a religious, yeah, you've got. So it's not going to be any more non-conforming. A lot of variants.
It's not part of the hardship, but, you know, the use of that. Church again, will be a benefit to the town.
Right, right, and get them into compliance, so that they can, you know, actually. Do upgrades, you know, building permit, you know, do all the right things that are necessary.
But to your point, you know, no outdoor stage with late-night parties, music, littering, bothering the neighbors, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's a separate section of regulations about entertainment, you know, so they, you know, they would have to come back, then, you know. For that.
That's right, we've heard that in the past, too.
Well, I see it as a very unique situation. Um. Not the only situation in town that would run this course, the church down in the village would probably. Run into the same scenario, if they ever had to sell that, embrace that property, so they would fall under the same, the same hardship. Uh. Yeah, like I say, to, to give the variance would leave it. No more. Or less non-conforming.
Right.
Than it is, right, though we really wouldn't be changing. Anything in the zone. So any other discussion?
No opposition.
No.
To it, so.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? And then do the, when to take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Okay. No names? I have it. And. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move on to. ZVA twenty-one dash two, application for variance. From section five. Dash zero two dash zero one dash zero one dash zero one, to allow for a four-family dwelling at four twenty-nine term, uh, Colin Turnpike. Okay, do we have a motion?
Uh, sure, I'll move that we approve, uh, the DVA twenty-three, uh, oh two. Uh, as presented for a variance to section five oh two oh one oh one oh one, to allow the parcel known as four twenty-nine. Colin Turnpike. To be used as a four-family, multi-family use, hardship presented is a pre-existing non-conforming use that will not become any more non-conforming. In the specific health and safety that the application present applicant presented. Of the improvement, it'll allow for an annual fire inspection. Uh, there are no residents, uh, in favor or opposed to the application.
We have a second, I have a second now. Okay. Discussion? Anybody want to throw anything else for discussion?
I mean, it's kind of funny, if you look at the property card, I mean, it's, it's. A two-family, it's a multi-family use, but it's got another. Bathing, so, I mean, if you look at the history in the town records, you'll see that there. Is a two-family plus one commercial use there. So, I mean, him coming forward, you know, with this kind of an application. It opens them up to an annual fire inspection to become more compliant. Um, you know, it's a multi-family use in a village zone, really. Uh, I mean, I would be more inclined to say, you know, go ahead and change the whole zone there and allow a multi-family use, you know, you've got businesses there, you've got. At an art gallery historically, you got a multi-family use, I mean, it's really a. It, it's what, you know. Small villages become now, you know, multi-family use, small business use, you know, some residential, you know, all these different uses. So I think we want to encourage him to make improvements to the property. Doesn't become any more non-conforming, um, and he's got a bona fide hardship.
And to, uh, the advocate's credit, uh, he's. You know, been more than above board in, uh, in addressing, uh, the concerns and trying to get things right on.
Yeah.
On the record, so I think that's. All good. And he went to UConn.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more that the, uh, property will be brought up to code and. Quality of life, uh, for the residents. And, uh, without knowing. The exact dates, I mean, it's been operating as a four-family, three-family, four-family.
Commercial.
Commercial, I mean, like I said before, I was. I was just a little kid going with pops and having a burger there. Uh, so. I mean, it, it's been there and it's been, been operating. Much along the same line for several, several years, so. Um. I'm comfortable with the situation myself. Um, any more discussion?
Good.
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Get to work. Okay, uh, we have no unfinished business, we have the March twenty-third. Minutes. You guys can stay for the end, or you can, we have the March twenty-third minutes, is there, uh, is there a motion?
With a second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstained.
I did watch it and I read it. Thank you again, Michael, for your, uh.
Thank you, Mike, great help.
No words?
Appreciate it.
Anytime. Okay, uh, correspondence, um. Public participation. Your chance. Okay.
Yeah, if you live in the town now, Steve, you can join the board.
Okay. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, get to work.